It is noon. Welcome to the November 7th work session of the Cheyenne City Council. Please put your phones on silent or mute and our normal practice is that although the public is welcome to attend, we do not take public questions or input at the end. So today's session is during our goal setting, we had a revenue subcommittee assigned to come up with ways for the city to generate additional funding and today is their report. So I don't know if councilwoman Aldrich or Emmons want to give a brief introduction or do you want me to just turn it over to staff? You're doing the presentation. Okay, then take it away.
Well, thank you, President Rennie, and thank you to our fellow council people for being available today. And I know this was relatively short notice, but the Fridays are filling up for work sessions. So and the holidays are upon us. And we really wanted to get this information out to you and share it with you. So Councilman Escabel and Councilwoman Emmons and I have been making up the subcommittee for the revenue subcommittee from the goal setting session. And so at any time, Councilwoman Emmons will jump in here and I don't know if Mr. Escabel is online. Yeah. So but thank you for entertaining us today. So we wanted to just bring our council colleagues up to date on the steps that we've been taking. So we met initially on August 8th and you should have received a copy of the subcommittee minutes that we put out after that September 8th meeting. And that was really to kind of get organized and discuss what we had, any thoughts we had on ways to increase revenue. And so you'll be able to see from those minutes that we looked at and talked about things like the pursuit of solar development that we know that Councilman Seagrave has been working on actively. Also talking about usage fees, for instance, with the fire academy and being training, training of other cities and municipalities fire force. Reviewing the fees and updating those fees is necessary to cover the cost of services. And we talked about permit and licensing enforcement. In the example of Emmett, who has now long retired, but was a sworn officer that was able to help to enforce some of those permit and licensing pieces. And then the use of NeoGov to flag individuals that had any outstanding fines or debt to the city anytime they're applying for permits. We also talked about TIFF and we talked about Fifth and Sixth Penny broadly and also bonding capabilities of the city as means of generating revenue. But the one that we probably spent and have spent the most time on is actually identifying way, ways to increase revenue through surplusing property that's not going to have any purpose currently for the city. So we did take a tour with Jason and Sam Payne from our community wreck and events department, and they showed us some examples of surplus properties that we're going to show you and here in a few minutes that the city currently owns. A couple of things to remember is that the greenway does require six feet on either side of the concrete path for maintenance and that there are some areas that also have a drainage channel of 10 foot width. So we want to make sure that people remember that those are some things that we were reminded we need to take into consideration when we're identifying properties. Following that tour, which we really appreciated, Jason and Sam was kind of the driver there and Jason was the tour guide. We met with TJ who explored the surplus property process and how properties can be surplused with us. And we talked about how those are valued and what methods can be used to get evaluation on those. Also, the advertisement period, how that's negotiated. And then the process of bringing it before the council for an MOU if we actually are successful in getting someone to bid on a property and that nothing would have to go through the council until that bid process had it had gone through the bid process and there was actually an offer that we would then bring before the council that would work its way through the finance committee. We then met with John Brody and Tom Cobb and TJ again to determine how the properties could be inventoried and then prioritized and then surveyed, how we could obtain the market values and negotiate right, right of ways. And so we thank you to all of those individuals for being here today or online so that they're here to answer questions for our colleagues if you should have questions that Councilwoman Emmons and I aren't able to answer for you. So the discussion has really ensued around the capacity in the city engineer's office and that many of those pieces of property might have drainage or WAPA or right of way considerations. And many may involve a need to plat or replat an area. We should also mention that there are some that are FEMA funded properties. And that means that there's a restriction on the sale, transfer or development due to hazard mitigation agreement. Also, there are land and water conservation fund parcels that have to remain in public recreational use for sale or repurposing, which requires federal approval. And then there's also the state highway commission that we've obtained some properties from. If you remember when we traded the old firehouse on Highway 30 with a developer here in town for property to build one of our new fire stations over by Ashley Furniture. We discovered that there was a reversion clause on that that we actually had to negotiate with the state highway department or the state highway commission on. So those can include reversion clauses in their deeds or agreements. And those clauses typically state that if the property is not being used for an intended public purpose, that its ownership reverts back to the state. We also have a piece of property that was donated by a family off of Dell Range that is that same type of a reversion agreement. If it were to no longer be used as a fire station or a training situation. So that please keep that in mind that some parcels that you may see around town that are vacant and you think, you know, and the city owns it and you're thinking, well, that's a great one to sell. There may be a reason why it hasn't been sold historically. So this is a map of all of the properties that are owned by the city throughout the Cheyenne community. And you'll see those in the dark gray area. Now again, remember that some of these fall into those categories that we just talked about. So we want to make sure that people understand that, but you can see that we have some pretty large parcels according to this map. And you'll find this on, I believe it's the city engineer's website. This is one of what we would consider a low hanging fruit. This is 3425 Christianson Road and all of these, not all of these, but many of these pictures I clipped out of Google Earth as I was putting this together. So this is an aerial view of that property, which is a large home and I believe it has three sheds on the property and then a pole barn type structure you'll see in the lower right hand corner. This was a property that was acquired when the Christianson overpass was put through. I believe that the current appraised value on it is $450,000 and it's or close and it's ready to go out for bid. We've had some interest in the past from people that live next door to this property that are contiguous to it and from other individuals. And it has gone out for bid one time prior, but the bid that was offered, we did have a reserve on that and the bid didn't meet the reserve. So this is one that we think will probably, we're hoping is going to go out to bid in the next next two weeks. So I knew it was in the, in the works. So thank you to TJ and Tom for getting that ready to go. This is the Converse and Pershing intersection. And this is, you'll see that wedge of land that's just north of the house on the left hand side. And that is actually meant to, has been left, it was created when the roundabout was put in and there was a house there that my understanding is the driveway actually backed out into the Converse Street area, which was before my time and Councilwoman Emmons's time on council. There, that property now was, has kind of been held on to so that a greenway connector piece could be put in there is my understanding. And in talking last week with engineer Cobb and our city attorney, John Brody and TJ, the discussion was about putting the greenway rather than to either the north or the south of that piece of property to run it down the center of that property and then be able to offer. Again, remember that we need six feet on either side of that concrete pathway to offer the remaining property on either side to the adjacent landowners. So that they could extend their properties or their yards. This is an overview of Saddle Ridge and so you'll see Saddle Ridge Park. There is in the large red in the lower right hand corner. That is not a property we're advocating for sale, just so nobody goes into plexi here. But what we're talking about is that there are a lot of drainage channels and right of ways here that are in red or are being utilized by a city currently like Saddle Ridge Park. And the green areas are what we're going to really be looking at as far as being able to perhaps surplus that property. So this will give you a view. This is the greenway. This is, Google Earth actually didn't have a lot of really current pictures, but you can see on the left hand side, we've got people who have moved their lawn furniture, fire pits and things out into that area behind their fences at their properties. The one on the right is actually a really large piece of property that sits behind several houses off of Fireside Drive. And so these are areas where as people move into these areas and extend their sprinkler systems out into these areas, it makes it really difficult for our community rec and events department to be able to maintain around the greenway and circumnavigate all of the lawn furniture and things that have been installed out there. This is a more detailed map of that area. And so you'll see the green areas are the areas that would be available. That one that was on the lower right hand side in the last frame is where that arrow is pointing to right now. And you can see it's a rather large piece of land that abuts those properties off of the greenway. This is United Nations Park. This is actually in Sun Valley off of Madison and East 10th, East 10th Street. And right next to Bain Elementary School. Bain is one of the schools that has been selected to be closed by the Laramie County School District. And I believe its closure date is in 2028. This park was not necessarily one that in the park master plan was necessary because we have the sunrise, the sunrise park? Is that what it's called? Sunrise Park? Right down the, it's by Sunrise Elementary, Sun Valley Park, right next to Sunrise Elementary off of 12th Street, which would still maintain that 10 minute desirable walking distance to a city park. This is a rather large piece of property that is probably underutilized. And it has, is actually in the neighborhood, sometimes a, has a risk or a problem area in the summertime with teenagers and nefarious activity. Not really well lit. So there was some discussion about whether it would be better to offer this piece of property up at this point or wait until the school district vacates Bain Elementary and they're ready to sell that to see if it all could be sold as one to one developer or one entity that would be interested in developing both the old United Nations Park and the Bain Elementary site. That's a big unknown because we just don't know what the district plans are for those vacant elementary schools at this time. This is Parsley and Unicover Drive. This one is along Interstate 80 and you'll notice it shows a big picture, but we actually don't own all of that property. We own a strip of property that runs along the west edge of that on the far left hand side, runs north and south from Interstate 80 south towards College Drive. And that is actually also has a interesting challenge and then it has a WAPA line or easement through there. But the landowner that owns the property to the east of our property isn't able to access his property without us granting him access abilities. There is a belief that he, this, the individual who owns that property may be interested in buying this strip of land from us to add to his piece of property and that that would then be able to give him access to his property on a regular basis without having to have an agreement with the city. We did in our, in our wisdom, we thought this was a great place for a compost facility. And we proposed that to Director Nimicek and she and her team went out and checked on it and said that they didn't believe that it would be ideal because there are neighbors to the west of that. Or I'm sorry, to the east of that and they were concerned about dust and problems with, you know, the neighbors being downwind of a compost facility. And so it hadn't had some other challenges, but that one is one of our larger parcels. This is Sioux Drive and this one is an interesting one. If you've ever driven up Yellowstone, this is the piece of property that is, sits below Doubletree and it runs between Prairie Hills Drive and Yellowstone. There is a house in the lower right hand corner that borders our property or faces our property. It sits at an angle that you can see there. And this piece of property requires our crews, our community wreck and events crews to go out and mow this on a very regular basis at the other, the adjacent landowners request. That's one of the challenges that we're, I think we're facing is the maintenance of a lot of these parcels. Is that it really adds up our labor cost and our maintenance cost. And the expectation is, is that if the city owns it, that we need to maintain it. So while this is probably not, it would take a lot of dirt work, I think, to utilize this. But there may be a developer or someone who would be interested in utilizing this land in order to build something there. So this is Cary and Moore. And this is a odd little piece of land that is adjacent to this homeowner's property. We do need some right of way there. You can see that we have a sidewalk on either side of it. But there actually is quite a bit of little space there that we could actually add to this homeowner's property. And this is one again that, you know, it's just a regular ongoing maintenance expense to the city with no future planned use for that wedge, if you will, that is at the corner of Cary and Pershing really. But that street where the truck is parked on this picture is Moore Avenue. This is 19th and Albany. This is a strange little piece of land also that the city owns at that intersection that is by the Lutheran church there as you're headed east on 19th Street. And then this is Fifth and Dimming Drive. And these, a lot of these pictures were provided by Jason and his team. So thank you for providing additional pictures. There are some areas along Dimming. Councilman Escabel had asked about the use of some of these properties or selling some of these properties. Some of these have been purchased for flood mitigation reasons. And as we talked about early on, that that's one of the considerations. Some of them have been, we've used federal funds to purchase for flood mitigation. But there are some parcels or pieces throughout here that we might be able to use for different types of recreation that did not have structures. Things that were talked about by Councilman Escabel were things like basketball courts, pickleball courts, things that we might be able to utilize some of the space for with a flood that would help still allow floods to be mitigated and honor the use of that property for that while getting another use out of it. This is 9th and Dimming Drive. And then this is a detailed map of the Dimming area. With, you can see all the different lots along there. Many of them have been purchased or being used for flood mitigation. Would you like to, is it, Tom, would you like to talk about the one lot that we purchased or the area that we purchased that you were thinking could be subdivided for housing? Oh, I'm sorry.
What's the significance of the green and the red on that map?
That is a great question.
Mr. Bartleboard, Chair through you, TJ Bartleboard, purchasing manager. So the intent of the green is all the areas that we technically don't have a current use for, so they would be eligible to sell pending any land restrictions. The red sections at the top is the Optimist Park. So we wouldn't be selling that off. And then on that kind of lower right hand corner, there's greenway path that goes through there. So that would be maintaining that kind of six foot greenway easement through that section. So the green is just kind of showing what could be on the table for discussion for sale.
Thank you.
Tom, is that lot at the bottom of this picture? Okay. Well, just, do you want to? When we get to that, to the end, would you talk about that a little bit? So we also have some challenges. This is one of Tom's nightmares. This is 106 West 26th and this is an individual who would like to be able to purchase a piece of the a lot that is, would be adjacent to her property. But my understanding is that there are multiple owners to this little piece of land. And so it would take a replating of that area. And it's just one of those things that is going to be time consuming and involve more bandwidth than what the engineer's office has right now. But entities that are wanting to buy it, but we just haven't been able to be able to replat it and get it done in order to be able to get it sold. So so what is our next step? Christianson Road bids are going out for bids with a $450,000 appraisal amount. We're also bringing a resolution forward and this is really what we want to make sure our colleagues know is that we're going to ask for $100,000 from the general fund to contract with the company who will inventory and then prioritize and survey and obtain market values and negotiate right of ways on behalf of the, under the supervision of the engineer's office. And then we'll bring those properties forward as they become ready to be put out for bid and then when there's an MOU that needs to be approved by the city council, that we'll be able to do those MOUs. So at this point, I would ask Kathy, is there anything you'd like to add?
Mr. Chair. So I think one of the things that we talked about was over by Coal Elementary because that's also going to be demolished, that school is. And we have quite a bit of property sitting along that street. So it's kind of like the one in Sun Valley that once the school is gone, it opens up quite a bit of land that could be used for housing or, or something along that line. And, and as Councilwoman Aldrich said, we just wanted to make sure that everybody on the council was well aware of all of the pieces of this, all the different components before we went any further, just to make sure everybody was on the same page. So, thank you.
I have, so is Coal School just one they're phasing out or, and not to be rebuilt? Is that the understanding? It's interesting because that's where they bought the neighborhood facility from us years ago. Okay, Councilman Escabel, do you have anything to add? Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When Jason was taking us on that tour, what I really learned was how native grasses are part of our ecosystem and how they keep the weeds out, but the neighborhood, the people in those neighborhoods, they want this mowed down. So it's looks like their lawns, I guess, but I think the challenges that it gives our staff are really headaches, you know, and I think that's one of the main reasons to alleviate a lot of these properties and surplus them. So take the burden off our staff.
Councilman Aldrich, I cut you off. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was just going to say that around Coal Elementary is where the lots are that would be able to be utilized for housing that I had asked Tom to talk about. So I thought that was a perfect segue from Councilwoman Emmons.
Okay. Director Cobb, do you have a? Do you want to add to that?
Yes, sir. Through you, I guess I would add that again, we have to be a little cautious as I've, as I've talked about again, because most of these properties along Dimming and Fifth and that area are in the floodway. So we have to be a little cautious, right? About what we're looking at. And again, I'm looking at Coal Elementary, for instance. Right now it's regulated floodway. So there's reasons that those parcels haven't been developed in the past. And as you pointed out with Councilman Escabel's point about moving forward, some of these things can be developed with some elements. Meaning if you want to put a park, you want to put something like that in it, it's fine, but I can't put residential structures in floodways. But to follow up your original question to me about some of the areas that I was looking at, this would be over by Dave Romero Park, just on the very far eastern side of obtained some of these parcels as I've been here and we are looking at a long range plan to do what I call the Clear Creek inline detention facility, which is now under design by Mr. McDonald. And as a part of that, we're hoping to open up some of that area on that far east side, which is near, I'm going to say Schneider there on the edge. And also on, can't get the street name, just on the adjacent to Dillon. Both those could be developed for residential housing in the future because I'm going to remove the floodplain from it and, and, and create a detention area that then takes water away from that area. So again, long term wise, yes, short term wise, no. I hope that clarified some of it.
Yeah, that is good. That was really, that was the extent of the presentation that we prepared for you. And we did have a lot of help by, from TJ and John Brody, Tom Cobb, Jennifer and Sam and, and Jason. So I really appreciate all of their expertise and their help in guiding us through this process.
So Councilman Labor and Councilman Seagrave, do you have any questions for them?
I'm not sure I have a question, but I have a statement. The property on Sioux Drive was on the parks list, was that about a year ago? And the city made a commitment to the neighbors at that time that we would not surplus that property. It is used as a walking, hiking, dog, dog runs for the neighborhood. So I think that should be removed from your list. Also, I'm surprised that we're mowing over there. Several years ago, I asked the director, we had some folks on Doubletree that requested mowing and they were told no for the reasons that Councilman Escabel stated. So I'm surprised that we're doing any mowing over there. It shouldn't be costing us time or, or labor.
Director Sanchez.
Mr. Chair, Jason Sanchez, Community Wreck and Events. The area that we're mowing is the, just the, on the north side of the sidewalk on Sioux Drive, not the entire area. We do receive requests for weed control. So we have our weed and pest go out and we're doing spot spraying of any of the noxious weeds that are growing in that area, but we're not mowing the entire hillside, just the area by Sioux Drive.
Mr. Chair, follow up.
Councilman Seagrave.
So is the mowing and the, and the limited, is that, is that a burden on your department?
Mr. Chair through you. It does require some time. I guess when we were doing the tours, what properties do we have available that we're not utilizing or that could be purposed for something else?
But this particular piece of property, we've already been down this trail. We've already said that we would not surplus it. So.
Okay.
Councilwoman.
When we were touring this, I was not. When we were touring this, I was not, and I guess I would need to clarify that, and I would like to get it clarified. I'm, I was not under the impression that we had made any promises that we were not going to surplus that property. Um, and that it was not, if the, if people wanted that for their use to run their dogs and things, that they would need to. Look at purchasing that if they were interested in keeping that that way for, from us.
Okay, I, and I do not remember. I don't know if there's any documentation on that promise or not, so. Councilman Labor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have a couple of questions here. Um, first of all, how did we acquire that pretty extensive piece of property there on, off of Sioux Drive? When did that happen? Well, I know it was long ago, but it's really a pretty large, uh, unusual area. And I was just curious how we ever got it in the first place.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Seagrave.
The, the developer of the Barrick subdivision happens to be here, and I believe he dedicated that to the city. Because at, at least at that time, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, it was not considered, um.
Wasn't buildable?
Not buildable, but I'm, I'm, I don't want to put those words. That's my understanding.
Somebody in our audience can illuminate us on that one? Mr. Kaiser? Would you please?
They've gotten fancy. Yeah, been a while since I've been here.
It's been a little while since you've been here.
It has been. I've got lonesome for you guys.
Well, thank you. Yeah.
Uh, the, that property was actually dedicated to the city. In 1954. When it was a subdivision by United Airlines. And it was dedicated as a park at that time. It was, it wasn't from Barrick's developers.
Okay.
So, so it was dedicated as a park in 1954.
And I've been here a long time, but that predates me.
Well, it does me too, but I've did a lot of research on the area and I know a lot about it since I live real close by, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser.
Mm-hmm.
Um, sure, Councilman, well, Mr. Labor had the floor, so I'll let him finish.
To continue, um. I'm, Mr. Brody's not here, but I believe they're.
Mr. Brody may be online, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, so Mr. Brody did let me know that he is still in a meeting and. It's not him online, Ken, who came in. So I don't have Mr. Brody. He did let me know he wasn't going to be here.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Sorry, Mr. Labor.
So I was curious about those statutory requirements that are. Specific to, did it to park property that is, uh, acquired and is, uh. For that noted on that deed, I believe, for that purpose. And that's, uh, um, certainly something that's worth, uh. Knowing about, and that obviously also applies to United Nation Park. So I'd be, uh, I guess I'll be checking in with the city attorney's office about that because, um. Haven't read those statutes in a while, but I believe there's some notation there in them. My other question is Converse and Pershing here. And, uh, Mr. Cobb, is there a drainage pipe? Running through that property and going to the detention facility across Converse?
Director Cobb. Rennie, through you to, to Councilman Labor. Yes, sir. There's a 12 by 6 box culvert that runs straight through the north side. Which complicates us. You'd have to retain an easement on the property to the north for that box culvert.
That's a huge, I remember when that was placed. That's a huge, you could walk through that thing.
Yes, and, um. I, I think that complicates any possibility of anyone utilizing that property since it is. A major improvement and a part of our drainage improvements in that area, so. Uh, I'd like to, some consideration of what possible use. Could come of a piece of property that was bought for that purpose. And had that, uh, large drainage pipe, uh, installed. And, uh, so I guess we'll get some answers for that at some point.
Uh, President Rennie, through you to Councilman Labor. I, I think, sir, if you notice on the aerial, and I can see it on mine now. The gentleman to the north is already using the property. He parks his truck on it. So I think, I, I don't have a problem with anybody parking a truck on top of the easement. I think we just can't. The structure over it, but I mean, we've approached these, this is one in particular that I've been trying to work on for about six years. We talked to the lady to the south, we talked to him to the north. If we can put the Greenway in the middle and, and require an easement on the north side, in case we do have an issue. He can park his truck there and it would be his property, right? And we'd all be good. So I'm, I'm okay with it as long as we're able to obtain an easement in, in, in condition of the purchase and sale agreement. Does that make sense, sir?
Yes, I think that there's, uh, some sensible uses there that preclude any sale. So, um, also, President Rennie. I'm very familiar with all of that property along Demming Drive. It really, uh, stands out. You go, wow, come this is the way it is. And, uh, it is the way it is because of that floodway designation. It is, um. Something, and for instance, we have a, a situation right down the creek there. At what was the disgraceful trailer park that is now gone. Where that individual is very interested in doing something with it, and he is extremely persistent. In his efforts, but it. Is designated as the floodway. There's a piece of property I think we should be acquiring, uh, for access to clean out under the, uh, I-180. And to clean it up. It's really glad to see the trailers gone, but there's still a lot of junk there. Or parts left over, but when you look at that. Um. I'm not sure, so we look at the, at the, I would call it the orange potion, portion. There at the top, well, obviously that's Optimus Park and the Greenway runs through it. So on the other side of the street there in the green. I don't know if that's, uh, uh, maybe Mr. Sanchez can help here. Uh, in that park's master plan. Isn't a major part of that intent to determine what can and should be recreational property and what shouldn't? I mean, are we thinking of expanding Optimus Park here? Or I'm hearing about basketball courts and some sort of recreational activity?
Mr. Cobb or Mr. Sanchez, do you have a response to the last question?
Mr. Chair, Jason Sanchez, uh, Community Reckoning Events. I don't have an intention of expanding Optimus Park. Again, I think, um, TJ, I just identified what. Parcels of property the city owns, and I think there's discussion of what they could be used for. Um, but it's not my intent to expand Optimus Park at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Councilman Escabel, you had, you had a question for Mr. Kaiser? Do we need to bring him up again?
Well, if it was, uh, the area over there on Sioux Drive was going to be a park, this was 1954, then we should. Either make it a park or. Uh. Uh, I think surplus it, uh. Councilman Seagrave said we made a promise, but a promise is only a promise until you elect a new council, uh. But, uh, going forward, the way it is, is unsightly, and it's a burden on our, uh, staff. So, you know, we can discuss that one a little further. Uh, the, the parts about having more opportunities for recreation in this community. Uh, when I was told it was a drainage area over there off Demming. Was, and a park, you know, comes to mind, there, there's, we actually have tennis courts in a detention fund. So I think there are other opportunities and. Um, if we can start selling off these properties, and then this is only the tip of the iceberg. So, um. And we have a revolving land account and there are properties that the city does need to require, acquire for other reasons. And, uh. There's no money in that account right now. I think maybe four or five dollars, something like that was what we were told. But, uh, um, there's a lot of. Uh, reasons to move forward with a lot of these prop, this, this project that we're talking about here. And we hope that, uh, council will support us in the financing of it.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Seagrave.
I need to reply to his comments on, on Sioux Drive property. It is being used as a park. It's, it's got walking paths. People walk their dogs through there. Uh, just like any other park that we have, just like the Greenway. So it is being utilized by the neighborhood. And we are not spending much to maintain it.
Councilwoman Aldrich.
Um, President Rennie, through you, I think that, um, one of the things that became really clear to me is that a lot of these pieces of property have been. Created as, uh, annexation has taken place over time or as developers finish a project and, um, have excess land after the plating. Uh, like out in Saddle Bridge where we have a much broader Greenway strip than probably what we would normally purchase, um, in a situation. But I think at the end of the day, what it comes down to is that, uh, and we've said this to neighbors in many areas, um, that have. Had a piece of property annexed close to them, um, that the only way to control what happens on an empty lot or a piece of property by you is to own it. And so, um, we want to give the, an opportunity to these adjacent landowners to be able to purchase these pieces of property. To take them off of our inventory. Some of these we're actually paying property tax on. Um, and then be able to, um, let those homeowners, uh, utilize that property and, uh, maintain it if they'd like to. I'm, I'm guessing that there won't be very many of these properties that would not be purchased by an adjacent landowner. Um, except in these large parcel amounts. Um, I think that we do need to probably, if this property on Sioux Drive is a, an actual park. Uh, we probably need to, um, make sure that we know what those agreements were in 1954. And we need to make sure that's codified and that, um, everybody understands, um, because. Intentions are good from one, you know, uh, by one council, but it's important to make sure that everybody understands that. Agreement so that as councils change, um, tho- those promises. Or what people perceived as promises can be kept from, from council to council to those homeowners.
Um, I'll go with Councilman Escabel this time and then Councilman Labor.
Uh, there, through you, Mr. Chair, one other thing we talked about, uh, with Greenway access. So from Holiday Park all the way to. I think it's College and from Lincoln Way to Pershing, that. Big area of Cheyenne has no way to access the Greenway unless you have to cross one of those major streets. So where was it, uh, Engineer Cobb, we talked about having another tunnel access put in?
Mr. Cobb.
Uh, President Rennie, through you to Councilman Escabel. Sir, are you talking about over on Venetian Way then or under, where, where are we at? I'm sorry.
I can't remember. We were talking about putting another, uh, tunnel, Greenway access tunnel. Uh, to connect that larger neighborhood area. To, uh, the Greenway, so they wouldn't have to cross either College Drive or Pershing or Lincoln Way.
Mr. Cobb, is your memory?
Right now, give me one second.
And, um. On the Sioux Drive area, I think it's, it's kind of leaving that up to the Ward Two. Members of the council to decide which direction you guys want to go with that. Uh, you, those are your constituents and, uh, whatever you guys decide to do with it, but it really doesn't look like a park to me, so.
It's a native park. It'll be interesting. I don't know if we can research back and figure out to 1954. I know there are other, like. The area north of, um. The VA had restrictions on it because the government had given it to us years and years ago and. And it was for recreation, and if we were to sell it as we did to Menards, then we had to. Supplement that with the same amount of recreation dedicated property, so. Who knows, there were restrictions put on that back, what is that, 70 years ago now? Mr. Cobb?
Dr. Rennie, I was trying to find on IDOC, the original plat for the first one that was for Office Sioux. And the only thing I've found right now is it just states that it's, it's planted as parkland and it states here that. It was executed at the request of the public to retain this property for quote unquote. Park area as previously plotted on the plat of North Cheyenne First Filing. And I, I just can't access that first filing right now, but that was second filing. So that's the only information I have on that parcel.
It'll be interesting. I assume at some point you'd be able to access that and we can get a report back on that.
I'll certainly look at the plat and we'll be able to be, get the information that needs, sir.
Okay. All right, Mr. Escabel, are you finished? Councilman Labor.
Thank you, President Rennie. What's occurring to my mind is the entire question of what is open space? And what is park? And dedication of those areas and, uh, certainly this area, um. Is one I'm not all that familiar with. I've never walked it. But, um. And if the deed does reflect the term park. Um, I think we think of a park as being much more developed than that. And then we look at, uh, for instance, some of the other open space that we have. Like the, uh, property we hope to run the Greenway around. There immediately east of College Drive where the path comes up. And then it hopefully heads out to the, uh, New Kiwanis Park. Well, that's drainage. But perhaps we ought to consider, uh, some notification or designation to some of these properties that, uh. To me, that's open space and that it is, uh, has value as such, but, um. And, and I think that's a matter of, uh, as the community grows and changes. We didn't used to talk about open space. That was a concept that came from elsewhere. I think it's a very valid concept. So you have very lightly maintained properties that, uh, are there for that. The lock and the dog, and I think that we're, we're looking at them, uh. We should be looking at that as possibly a designation. I'm not sure, but. Um, as has been pointed out, there are other examples and, uh, also, um. I, I think this is a valuable exercise. I'm not sure that we don't need a lot of effort here before we ever start spending a hundred thousand dollars. Particularly on the Demming Drive properties. I mean, they are. I, I'm, I'm sure I'm not the only one that, uh. Inquired about them many years ago. I mean, it's real obvious. Why can't we do anything with it? Well, that's some pretty strict, uh. Law that we don't have any control over. And I, and I do want to mention that, um. Councilman Escabel is totally correct about that long stretch of Nation Way. That does not have access to the Greenway that is immediately to the south there. I don't know what the answer is, but there have been deaths, uh, that I think possibly would be, uh. Occur there because of that fact. I, so I think that's important, but I also think that, uh. When we look at, um, some of those issues of underpasses and funding, um. I'm not sure that's a priority, and if we need to, uh. Bring some of those priorities forward because obviously there are cases along the Greenway. Where connections could be made and ought to be evaluated, but we've got so much going on there. Uh, finishing the master plan and, uh, the other efforts that we have. Um, I just think, uh. That's not going to happen right away, so. And I, and I do think when you look at the amount of money in some of these properties. before we proceed with this as a money-making idea, I'd like a lot more information about, I mean, a, a adjacent property owner might say, I want to buy it. Whether that ever, and possibly is using it inappropriately. But that doesn't mean that when that appraisal happens and that price is put on it, that they're going to want to follow through. So fascinating questions, and I certainly appreciate the effort this committee put in. So thank you.
Councilwoman Aldrich?
President Rennie through you. I think that that's, that is the reason for the resolution that you'll be seeing coming forward is that while we understand that there is a lot along Deming Boulevard or Deming Drive that we wouldn't be able to utilize. I think it's important when we have this many pieces of property and TJ would be able to tell us about how many pieces we have. Do you remember off the top of your head? It's over, it's over a hundred, and I think it was actually around two seventy-seven or something crazy like that. I think it's important for us to know what we own, why we own it, what designations it has. And I think it's also important for us to not, through this inventory process, they will be able to prioritize that and they'll know that, for instance, on their inventory list, it would probably say next to Deming that these were flood plain mitigation and they were not parcels that could be sold. If there's any replating or plating issues in those areas, it, we could make sure that those were all cleaned up and taken care of. I think that this is one of those areas where it doesn't become an issue until you get ready to sell a piece of property along Holiday Park. And then you discover that it hasn't been plotted. It was never plotted. And then you have people excited because they think we're selling off Holiday Park by the parcel. So I think that being good stewards of publicly owned property, that we need to have a, a good handle on an inventory list. We need to know if we're not going to surplus that property. We owe it to our constituents and to our departments, I think, to have a reason why that that isn't going to be utilized for revenue or put out for surplus. And I think that that is, doing more research on this is not amongst the bandwidth of the current staff that we have. And that's the reason for the hundred thousand dollar ask is to be able to contract that out and be able to get a better handle on what we own and why we own it.
Thank you. Councilman Escobal?
Yeah, one other thing through you, Mr. Chair, we didn't talk about was the, the beautification part of it. We did meet with another lady, then her and two other gals are taking up a little triangle over there on the corner of Pershing and Henderson and we'll take a before and after picture, but what they're going to do is add some red, white and blue flowers into that area and, and some more bushes. Is that what they're going to do? So the beautification part of it is something else, you know, so a, a lot of these properties are unsightly, uncertain that there are things we can do going forward to make our city look a little more presentable, let's say. There is the other issue of where we're going to put the compost facility and going forward, the area between Menards and Prairie View Golf Course has become a dumping land. We need to probably fence that off and decide whether or not we're going to expand the golf course to that area and where the compost facility currently is.
Hey, Councilman Seagrave, I guess you had your light on and then off, Kathy, so.
I just, I didn't realize we were in a position where we had to move the compost facility. I've not heard anything about that.
We did have a presentation on that during an executive session about a piece of property we might want to acquire for that, so.
We might want to acquire?
Yes, to move it to, so we can talk about it after this. Councilwoman Emmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Councilwoman Aldrich on this. I think, you know, we, we as a committee, we're trying to figure out some options for ways to increase revenues. In that, I think maybe some of these will not serve for that purpose, but definitely this is, I think, a good exercise in some long-term planning and being able to identify where are we going with certain goals, you know, about space and I think it's just a, a good idea to, like she said, have a, an idea of what we have, where we have it, what the plan is for it, so that the next people that do come in also have a good idea of that and aren't going through the same exercise that we go through.
I have some questions if I'll yield to Councilwoman.
I'm sorry, just had one more comment, President Rennie through you. I really like the idea too that Councilman Labor brought up that we have gotten, our city has gotten to the size now where maybe we do need to have some designation for open spaces, so that the ma, the public knows that it's an open space, that it's not privately owned, that they, I, I don't know how many people know that they actually have public access to this land below Doubletree. I'm guessing the area residents do, but I know people who go all the way out to Horse Creek to run their dogs, so maybe this would be more convenient that live in Westgate. But if it was designated as a public open space, it would also set the expectation that it is, once we define what that means, that maybe it doesn't require the type of maintenance or the level of maintenance that we've, people have become accustomed to in our city parks. So I think maybe there's some real benefit from having a defined open space and also being able to designate those open spaces for our community.
Perhaps it'd be helpful if we added maybe a definition of open space then, so. Because obviously we have no intent to put in a manicured park in that area. I thought it was, oh, I thought it was essentially United Nations Park, I think was the site of the old Sun Valley Pool decades ago. Yeah, on Converse and Pershing, if we did put the easement on the north side with our now reduced lot requirements, would that be a buildable lot? Director Bloom says yes, it would be. I remember that space, we kept that space when we did, when we did the drainage retention pond at the VA and ran the that culvert, that tunnel, whatever is, you could drive my Selica through that, I think, if I remember the time.
Twelve foot by six foot high.
Yeah, I know. That's why I said, I remember when it was installed, but we kept that open space to allow the neighborhood to have foot or bicycle access to Coal Shopping Center and Safeway so that they wouldn't have to go all the way around. So I still think there's, and with, even though the Safeway store is gone, Blue's still trying to develop that area with some sources. There's a restaurant there, so it would probably be, I still think it'd be some benefit to the neighborhood to keep some access through there. But if it's a buildable lot, we maybe want to just, rather than run our Greenway down the middle, we may would be wanting to put it on the north end and sell it off that way. I, looking at the, the report on our goal setting, on your report from August eighth and you, and Councilwoman Aldrich briefly touched on this, but on the second group, obviously you concentrated mostly on cer, on, on properties and can we sell those to generate revenue? Was there any discussion of, of pursuit of, like we have a hundred acres out at the landfill that we could put a solar array on? Was there any discussion there? The feasibility of doing that?
Well, we did, but quite honestly, we know that Councilman Seagrave is, is probably the most knowledgeable on the council in that arena and has been doing the most work on that. And so we did not dig deeply into that because we knew that that was something that he had been working on.
Okay, and I like the last bullet point on using NeoGov to flag individuals with outstanding fines or debts to the city of, did the committee pursue that at all?
We have not pursued that at all. I will tell you that this property piece has really taken the majority of our time. It doesn't mean that these aren't other areas. We also looked at, you'll notice on the backside of your document, that we talked about asking for ideas from employees because the boots on the ground are the people that are closest to it and having some sort of a, a system that would have employees help us to identify how to generate income or reduce spending and some sort of a incentive program for employees to do that. We also talked about that we really need to have a better, better understanding of all of our leases, who we're leasing to and how long those leases are and when they're up for review. I don't think that we probably as a council, at least I as a council member, don't have a good handle on that. And that came to light recently with over the airport lease. So I think that those are all areas that we still will continue to work on. It's just that this became all consuming.
Sure. That was my question then. Does the committee members feel that their work is done, or do you want to keep pursuing some of these other areas?
I don't think it's done. Do you guys think it's done? No.
Okay, good, excellent. I know we're short of time. I do have this is on a totally different subject, but I do have a, a revenue generator that I want to run by you and get some thoughts. I have been bugging Brad Bowen at the Board of Public Utilities for the last year. And they have new software and they have come up with a way, or Brad has come up with a way to to keep track of this, but I have, I would like to, for example, designate a park or equipment in a park or something and say for the next year, monies generated are going to go to this project, and I was thinking more recreation. That to allow people to round up on their Board of Public Utilities bill. And if we designate a use for it, Board of Public Utilities now has a way to say if people elect to round up when they're paying their public utilities bill, it would go to whatever. And as I envisioned it, we just designate something for six months to a year and then we could change that or renew it. But then those monies would be set aside, Board of Public Utilities would send it to Rob and along with, you know, and as check, they do that every month with the two percent fee that we have. And then, and I've talked to Rob and she said, that's not a problem to track that and do that. So that's another way that we could, I think voluntarily raise some monies. So I can, I don't know if we want to do that in resolution form to create that system. But I want you to be thinking about it and Jason, I kind of like, again, my thoughts were to do it towards recreation because if monies get caught, recreation is the one that always gets put in the bind because we have to take care of the police, fire and streets and sanitation. So I don't know, Jason, you might provide me a list of things that, smaller things that maybe we could designate to go for that, but anyway, that's available to us. And I just got that word from Mr. Bowen in the last month or in October, so I would like to pursue that. So if any of you have thoughts, let me know, please. And with that, our business is concluded. We are adjourned. Oh, sorry, Pete, I didn't see your light on. Do you want to say something?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. President. As far as this Converse and Pershing issue here that we are discussing, I'll go take a look at it, but I don't believe there's any access across that piece of property over to this, that area at Converse so that people can walk or bike down.
I, I think in the south corner, they were supposed to leave an opening so that people could get through there. Matter of fact, when it was first built, they didn't. They put a chain link fence there and that was back when we had Ashby, Brandon and Matt Ashby and Brandon Camarata, and I'd asked them to put an opening and I thought there'd been one put in there.
I'll go take a look at it. Thank you.
Okay, now we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.